All right, so I need to be spoken with the attorney. And if you can, if you can.
Mom, so we can raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I am Anthony Farnham.
Hi.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
Thus forth the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will painfully and impartially discharge.
And will painfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
From all the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the City Council.
As a member of the City Council.
Of the City Bristol, Virginia.
Of the City Bristol, Virginia.
According to my ability.
According to my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's all.
Congratulations from the left.
Congratulations. We turned the heat on. We have a lot of heat on.
We turned the heat on. Can we turn the heat on?
It's always good to get outside a little bit. Maybe you should turn it up a little bit.
Is that what you want to do next? This time, join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for place of allegiance. Place of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to again thank those that applied for the open City Council seat. I know the process was nerve-wracking at best, but I do want to thank those that applied. I want to encourage those that didn't get selected to find a spot on one of the committees and, you know, things that we need help with in the city. I think there was a lot of talent that we talked to through the process, so definitely we'd encourage those to look and see where we need some seats filled to help the city move forward. Thanks to Anthony Farnham for putting up with us for a few days, but I hope he worked too bad on you, but congratulations. So we're expecting big things from Anthony. So with that said, I want to thank the election members here in the city, Penny and Jeff, that spent a lot of time, and all the volunteers that helped them. I thought the election day went very smooth. They were very cordial when I came down to vote. I thought they really had the process well-groomed, very professional, so I was encouraging to see that. We've got a big week. We've got ribbon-cutting out at McAllister's on Euclid. It's open for business, but that's Thursday, and we've got a big meeting on another federal agency that's looking to move to southwest Virginia, potentially inside the city limits of Bristol, which we're going to talk about on Thursday. So all the dignitaries will be here, so we've got some good news in front of us, so let's keep the momentum going. I think we want to hear some more good news before the end of the year on some other businesses that are coming to the city. So let's keep our fingers crossed that all that actually happens and the economy stays good, so we're moving forward. So with that said, Randy, did anything?
I do. Council was about this time last year when we were having discussions in regards to the city's animal shelter and where we were going to move our animals. I'm pleased to announce that the animal shelter is moving along. It's been a little slower than anticipated. A lot of that's just been due to weather this year and trying to get that under roof. It's now under roof, and they are putting up the center block walls on the interior so it can comply with, and they may be up at this point. I didn't get a chance to go out today and look, but we're hoping to have this open potentially the first week of December. Maybe if we're lucky, we'd be pushing into November, but I would say hopefully the first or second week of December. Also, as the council knows, we worked very hard last spring on an alternative sentencing program in order to alleviate some of the jail overcrowding issues. I'm proud to announce that that is in full swing. Allison Arnold, she is in charge of that program, and she's doing a phenomenal job. At this point, our jail population has been reduced down significantly, and we have 10 individuals, I believe, in that program, nine or 10 at this point in that program. Most of the people started going into the program, I think, in late August, early September. We have had one failure at this point, but that's to be expected. But we gave someone an opportunity to get some tools that they needed in order to make a better life for themselves, and, you know, sometimes addiction, it's a little bit harder to overcome than just saying, "I'm going to overcome my addiction." But I do wish that person the best of luck, and hopefully they can get the help they need. And then I think what we'll see over the next three to four months is an increase in those individuals going into the alternative sentencing program. And with that being said, right now with having 10 people in this program, it's saving the city roughly $10,000 a month. So, and as we continue to increase that, we'll have quite a few more people, quite a few more people in that program over the next three or four months, which will be significant savings to the city.
That it?
That's it.
All right. Okay, moving on to matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda. We have a couple folks signed up. Jackie?
Why in that lane did we? For the City Council, the new City Council member, congratulations on your position. My name is Jackie Nofflin. I'm a homeowner of a couple of homes, properties, in this city, and as I hear many say, I love this city. I just want to make one mention of this area that is, I don't know what direction we're going to go with the schools, and you probably don't have a final answer yet, but next week is coming. But would we make a decision on a plan that doesn't have a good exit plan in time for emergency? If we don't have that down pat, a sound delivery on how we're going to exit our children out in case of a, an emergency, then how can we make a decision on building this beautiful building? Tearing down schools and doing different things? How can we make that decision and not have an emergency plan? One of the first things that come in our planning strategically is safety for our kids, and I'm going to leave it at that, but I want you to consider that as you go into next week, and my prayers are with you.
Thank you. All right, next person, Ginger Fleener.
Ginger Fleener, I live at 239 Sherwood Road. I'm here to hopefully give my last opinion on the whole school situation. For over a, about a year and a half, I'm going to guess, the first time I met you guys in Highlandview Library and had no idea what I was getting myself into. Told you guys that, never been to one of these things. It was a mess, to be honest. Looking back, it was a mess. But, you know, I debated for the longest time if I was even going to say something, not say something, and then my kids came into my mind. In all the presentations that I've been to and everything that I've heard about these schools, to jump on this thing and approve it in such a short amount of time is not the brightest thing to do. Something this, this serious that's involving children needs to be thoroughly thought through. I want my kids to be safe. This day and time, this world is going crazy, absolutely crazy. I don't want to put my kids in a position that I don't feel comfortable with because as a, as a parent, it's my job to protect them and to raise them to the best of my abilities, and by putting them in a situation that has no, no setting for an absolute plan of safety and, you know, just none of it made sense to me. There were so many things that should have been pointed out and fixed before even presenting it to the public. Your all's meeting may have went way different than mine, but I felt like I was in an earthquake. Everything was just so shaky, and as a parent, to go to a presentation like that, I mean, give answers, you know, just please, 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 for these kids' sake, please, all of you all, think about this.
Thank you. All right, I think that's the last person that's signed up for non-agenda. So the first item on the rest agenda is a consent agenda. How do we want to proceed on the consent agenda? Item by item, or?
I'd like that we, I'd like for us to pull out item 1.1 and consider it separately.
Okay.
And then I would move to approve 1.2 to 1.4.
All right, so is that a motion?
It is.
So we get a motion, Mr. Osborne, to pull out 1.1 and then approve 1.2 through 1.4 as presented.
And I need clarity on the $864,097 to the school board in that grant.
I've got that answer that we discussed this morning. That's where you're.
Do we want to discuss that now, or you want to pull that out separate, or what?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to have my answer questioned before I vote on it.
Right.
This morning, in regards to your question, Mr. Wingard, whether or not there would be a potential for more, another supplemental appropriation in the spring due to the school's ADM level, and I did confirm with Dr. Perigin that if there is an additional supplemental appropriation, that would be state funds and it would not be city funds.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I mean, I'll make the second.
Okay, so we got a motion to pull out 1.1, approve 1.2 through 1.4 in a second. Mr. Hartley. Okay, any other discussion? Okay. This is our rule.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, now to 1.1.
I move that we approve the minutes of the meetings as presented.
Second.
Okay, good approval of the minutes as presented by Mr. Hartley. Second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? Can please call her on.
Farnham?
Abstain.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, now on to regular agenda items, correct?
Correct.
Discussion on charter changes.
All right, council, as we continue to go through the charter to look at certain things in the charter that need to be remedied, section 2.06, under regulations for the city, says in general that the council should provide laws and things of that nature to provide for the prevention of vice, drunkenness, immorality, riots, disturbances, disorderly assemblies, the suppression of houses of ill fame and illegal gambling places, and the prevention of loot and disorderly conduct of or exhibitions, and the prevention of conduct and of speech dangerous to the public. I would suggest that we strike the language "immorality" due to the fact that it's a very broad word. What's immoral to one may not be immoral to another, and we would include the language "illegal gambling places" for that portion of the charter. Any thoughts, discussions?
How do you determine what speech is dangerous to the public?
Well, there is criminal statutes on the books that pertain to speech and threatening comments. In general, a threatening comment is not necessarily a crime, however, depending on how it is said and in the form that it is, it could rise to the level of a crime. For instance, I represented an individual who happened to write poetry, happened to be very violent poetry, and he happened to send it to an individual through the mail. And to say the least, it, it could make the hair stand on your head, and he was charged criminally for that and convicted. So there are statutes on the book that apply to that type of conduct. Referendums. As we move through this process, I know there's been a lot of discussion in regards to referendums for a variety of issues here in the city, and the referendum section is broad enough that council could call for a referendum by resolution by four-fifths vote of City Council. However, I've put in the supermajority, which would allow for, you'd have to have, you'd have to have four out of five of you agree that a referendum would be appropriate. So whether or not the city should spend $1,500 on a piece of equipment would probably not go to a vote for a referendum. I don't think, well, I may be surprised, but four of you, I don't think would vote for that, but you never know. So I've tried to get the best of both worlds with this referendum, and basically, this referendum language follows the state code section, which is 24.2 hyphen 684, and it says, "Whenever any question is to be submitted to the voters of the city, the referendum shall in every case be held pursuant to a court order as provided in this section. The court order calling a referendum shall state the question to appear on the ballot in plain English as that term is defined in section 24.2 hyphen 687. The order shall be entered and the election held within a reasonable period of time subsequent to the receipt of the request for the referendum if the request is found to be improper order. The court order shall state the date for the referendum within 45 days of the passage of the resolution. A copy of the court order calling a referendum shall be sent immediately to the state board by the clerk of the court in which the order was issued. The ballot shall be prepared by the appropriate general registrar and distributed to the appropriate precincts. On the day fixed for the referendum, the regular election officer shall open the polls and take the sense of the qualified voters of the city on the question so submitted. The ballots for use at any such election shall be printed to the state, to state the question as follows. Briefly state the question submitted, yes or no. The ballots shall be printed, marked, and counted and returns made and canvassed as in other elections. The results shall be certified by the secretary of the appropriate electoral board to the state board, to the court ordering the election, and to such other authority as may be proper to accomplish the purpose of the election."
So one question I had was, when you do the referendum, I wasn't clear on who would write and approve the plain English that appears on the ballot.
That'd be the court. The court. And basically, what would happen, when it came to it and we draft a resolution, just like we do on any other resolution that we do in the city, I would draft that language in accordance with that code section. So, for instance, if we wanted to have a referendum on whether to close Lee Street, you know, the resolution would stay in general terms, you know, whereas the City Council is determined that a referendum is required to determine the following, whether or not, whether the city should close Lee Street, question mark, and then you all would vote. I would submit the proper paperwork to the court. The court would determine whether or not that's plain English enough, and if it, if it is, it would move forward. If the court thinks that it needs to be written a little differently, they would send that back to us and we would redo it. But I would do it in accordance with the state code.
So, so to be clear, then you would, you would write it, we would, we would approve it and vote on it.
Correct.
That's the four-fifths vote, right?
Right.
So we would be approving the plain English, then you'd present that.
To the court.
We approve to the court.
Right.
If they disagreed, come back, we'd have to rewrite and reapprove it.
Right.
And then eventually, that's what shows up.
That's correct.
Okay.
So this section here is just the procedures for holding a referendum?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I know before we talked about with debt or something, it would be a non-binding referendum, but we don't have any procedures in place, is that?
Well, this referendum is broad enough that if it came to a debt issue and four of you all agreed that it should be brought up as a referendum, let's say, you know, we wanted to go do another retail development somewhere, and you all thought that this needs to go out for a referendum, as long as four of you agreed that it should goes out for a referendum, it would go out to a referendum. But if three of you did not agree for it to go to a referendum, it could still move forward, because all it takes is a majority of council to move forward with any project.
So here's what Bill was asking, and I was thinking, so this prevents us from putting in the charter anywhere specifics of debt limits or any other vehicles. It leaves the referendum wide open, whether it's a financially related item that we think should go up for referendum, like a project of X dollars.
Right.
Or, you know, closing down a street or annexing part of the whatever.
Right.
So that's, so it opens it up for everything.
It opens it up for everything. It's broad enough that it's open for everything. I try to come to a happy medium on this. When you start looking at the referendum law in Virginia and you start looking at when a referendum can occur, and that's why you see in this language that it would be, occur within 45 days of the passage of the resolution. And the reason for that is, if you use a, if you use the state law, it could potentially, depending on your timing, almost be six months before the issue would go to the ballot. So, and that's, you know, that's a long time sometimes, and we may be in a situation as a city where we have to have an answer, and it's an issue that needs to be voted on by the citizens in a relatively quick manner, and that we couldn't necessarily hold off for six months. Honestly, can't think of a good reason off the top of my head as to why that would occur, but I think the 45 days, it's plenty of time to move things forward and get a yes or no vote from the citizens.
So they have 45 days to hold the referendum or to set the date?
No.
Because I read that as they, they have to set, set his date?
It says, "The court order shall set the date for the referendum within 45 days of the passage of the resolution." So if we pass the resolution tonight and hold a referendum, the way that reads is 45 days from the day. So you've got 18 days left in November, so by December the 27th, you would have to have a referendum vote.
You'd have to have a referendum, or the court would set the date?
The, the date would be set prior to December 27th.
Okay, yeah, so, but the, it could occur?
It could, it could occur two weeks from today if the court so set the date.
So the vote doesn't have to happen in 45 days?
The vote would have to happen within 45 days. The date for the referendum within 45 days of the passage of the resolution.
Okay.
And maybe we could put the language in there, "Set the date for the vote on the referendum." May I clear that up?
Yeah, because the way I read that, to just, I mean, I think you could say the court has 45 days to set a date for the referendum.
Did you say much of this language is from the states?
Yes.
So other cities are using something like this?
You know, Nicole did a lot of research on what other localities had as far as referendums, and there weren't that many localities that had a referendum in their charter. Most localities will follow what is set forth in the state code, and however, I know that we may have a potential issue coming up next year that would require a referendum, and we have in our charter and we're able to move forward with it if it passes in the General Assembly. Any other questions? Meetings, this is, I wouldn't necessarily call it an issue, but it'll make maybe your all's lives a little bit easier. I know it'll make the police officer's lives a little bit easier. Whenever we have to have a special meeting, now, we need, unless I know all of you are showing up, I have to personally serve every one of you all, and so I get an officer to come to your house, replace a business, to serve you with a notice for the meeting. By changing this language in the charter, it says that "The meeting served upon each member personally or by electronic service at their city-provided electronic mail address." And that way, we can just send an email with a notice of the special meeting, and that would count the same as being served personally.
Read receipt.
We could do a read receipt.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Appointments and removals, this was brought up previously. You can see in the, the language here in red, it says, "A notice provided and all associated evidence shall be made public immediately after serving said notice to the person after the hearing, which shall be, that should be public." Yeah, we've got that backwards. The, the hearing would be public, and we can take out the language at the option of the person sought to be removed, so that everything would be public. Any questions about that?
So if it's public, you'd remove that at the, you wouldn't have?
There wouldn't be anything at the option. The hearing, we'll put in there that the hearing shall be public. The removal hearing shall be public, and that person may be represented by council.
And the decision's final.
Yeah, and decision's final. City manager, if you look at other charters, seems that counties consider their county administrator a chief administrative officer. Other cities, and cities consider it chief executive officer. I think this will help clear up some things that we'll talk about in closed session tonight as well in regards to the role as a city manager when it comes to hiring and firing individuals, and I can go into more detail in closed session about that and for the purposes of some of this language. So then the second bullet point, currently it reads, "The employees may be removed by the city," and I'm going to requesting you change that language to "All employees may be removed by the city manager."
Why do you exempt clerical, legal, and, I mean, I can see the courts, but clerical and legal, what does that?
Well, legal would be a city attorney, so a city manager wouldn't necessarily have anything.
Should you say city clerk, then, and city attorney?
We probably could change that to city clerk and city attorney.
Yeah.
Would be, that would just clear up that language. And the judicial departments, that would include your clerk of courts or any staff that's hired by our local judges. Finance department states, "The city manager may authorize any department or agency of the city to maintain a petty cash fund in an amount approved by the chief financial," or it currently reads, "Cash fund not to exceed $300." We're going to ask to change that in an amount approved by the chief financial officer. This specifically pertains to Clear Creek plus at the landfill, because there are times that there is more than $300 in cash. Golf course can't help it, simply because banks are closed on Saturdays and Sundays, and sometimes they need more cash. If they know they're having a big tournament, they need more cash on hand than $300, and this would prevent any, any issues and violation of the charter. So what we plan on doing in our financial policies is tightening that up with a policy. So, what we plan on doing in our financial policies is tightening that up with a policy that states the departments and, uh, shouldn't have any more than fifteen hundred dollars, or whatever Ms. Bradlin chooses, uh, for the department to have as petty cash. Uh, personnel department, this is new language, we'll talk more about this in closed session as well. It's, uh, I want to add this language, it's "To oversee and advise department heads in all cases of adverse employment decisions before any disciplinary action is taken." I think that's important to keep it consistent across the city. I could've put the entire sections here. Right now, it currently is the building code and community development, and now we would move, we would revise it to the planning department, to the community development department, and we move the environment control to section seven point oh eight. And the majority of changes here is just a name change within, within the charter for that code section. Use services department, we would strike that, that is no longer, uh, funded by the city, it no longer exists, so we would just go ahead and strike that language. Uh, the transit department, this, um, previously said, "The transit department shall consist of the transit director." And now it'd be the transportation planner and such other officers, employees of the department, as the council shall approve. And the function, "The transit department shall provide public bus services to the city of Bristol to the extent such provision is funded by the city council." We would strike quite a bit of the language in regards to the school bus system, because we no longer provide school buses. Uh, that's up to the school board, so we would be striking that language. And then, we would add the duties of the transportation manager to this department, which would be the administration and management of the transit system, coordination with state and federal transit agencies, transportation planning of road improvements on major thoroughfares, serve as staff to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Board created by Bristol, Virginia, Bristol, Tennessee, Sullivan County, and Washington County, Virginia. Coordinate special events on the city properties and right-of-ways, and such other duties is made from time to time, be assigned by council or city manager. Bristol, Virginia Utilities, uh, we would need to go from a board to an authority. And this language here is, this would be the language that it would be changed to, which follows the code section of, uh, section fifteen point two, I think seventy-two oh five of the Virginia Code, which a legislator enacted on July first, two thousand and ten. Uh, currently, our, uh, language does not, uh, follow the state code, so we just need to update that. To follow the state code. Any questions? This is the section that I, I've left it blank for discussion as to how we want to discuss borrowing in the future. That's one reason I left the referendum language somewhat broad, so that as long as four of you agreed, we could have a referendum on a borrowing issue if we needed to, and not necessarily put it in our charter. Uh, earlier today, I happened to speak with a local representative's staff in regards to putting in a charter provision on debt limits and borrowing for the city. And it was his opinion that the legislature would not approve a charter change that would immediately put the city in violation of its own charter. And based on his, based on that conversation, and really just based legally, I would not recommend that the city council put us in immediate violation of our charter, because it happens across the Commonwealth and other states as well. It's not unheard of for a citizen to sue a locality if they're in violation of one of their own laws. And, uh, that's not something we want to try to go defend in court while we're in violation of one of our own laws.
Okay, so, million dollar question, and so what are we going to put in place then, so that it puts the infrastructure, so that we don't get to where we were now, ever again?
I've given a lot of thought to this, and how do we do it appropriately, so that, um, we make sure we stay on the same current path that we're on. I think what needs to be done initially is start a policy. If you go back and you think two thousand fourteen, fifteen, when Mr. Hubbard, Mr. Harley came on the council, they implemented the reserve, um, piece of the budget, so that a million dollars would be set aside. And I don't think the first year, there was a policy in place, but I think after that, council maybe set an internal policy or something, there wasn't anything in writing in regards to the reserve fund until, uh, recent history, I think, um, maybe it was.
No, I think, I think when we changed the taxes, the idea was always to set that aside, and then at the, as we got to talking more with Davenport, and I think before, um, um, we went to, to borrow some money, I think that was one of the things they recommended, that you put that in writing, so the bond rating agencies could see why that money's sitting aside, and that you do have, you know, a policy in place, uh, not just to deal with the money you're setting aside, but to talk about where it's at. And, um, so I would agree with that, I mean, I think it's, it's worked well, and I think, you know, some of the things, when you put it in the charter, it tends to be more reactive. I think the policies and procedures around that can be much more proactive, cause, you know, you're setting a, a goal for where do we want to go, um, and, and it gives you a little more flexibility. Something is in the charter, it becomes, um, you know, I use the analogy of, uh, you know, thinking of the federal government, it's like adding an amendment to the constitution versus just passing a law. And I think, you know, to start out with, we can start with the policy, and, and in some cases, even some of these charter changes, I know, uh, some of these finance policies, for example, the finance committee's going to bring some to us here, uh, hopefully next month, I think, CFO's intention. But, you know, you, you look at those policies, they just undergird whatever would be in the charter, that you, you would want language in the charter that doesn't really handcuff you. I think the real meat of, of where these things at, uh, lie with the policies, so. And there's a lot of things, I think, we could do in terms of policies that we'd get around the issue of, we can set some goals and some things now, uh, but not be in violation of the charter, so.
And I think, or an ordinance, even if you set an ordinance out, you'd be in violation of your own ordinance too. So, I think really the proper thing for the city to do at this point, I mean, practically speaking, the city can't borrow any money. I mean, I think we could borrow maybe two million dollars. It would probably be at least seven years before we can borrow five to eight million dollars. But I think practically speaking, policy in place that says, "This is our policy going forward when it comes to borrowing." Dollars, it's the policy of the city that that would go out to a referendum vote to the citizens. Uh, if it's a, um, project between ten and fifteen million dollars, that it would be a, um, maybe the four fifths vote of council, if it's a project up to ten million dollars just by, uh, majority of council. So, I think there's things you could do to put those policies in place. Not that, first, don't think that all because it's in the charter, it can't get changed. I mean, it can get changed just as easy as we're making these changes tonight. So, six years from now, and your council's here, and your city manager's here, and they think that whatever we implemented was a harebrained idea, they can always go back to the general assembly and say, "We don't like this language," and the general assembly would more than likely approve it, to be quite honest. So, it's, it's not a foolproof mechanism, just by having something in the charter. Really, the only thing it does is, by putting something in the charter right now, it's putting us in violation of something that we never even had any part in getting us into.
Well, policy's not foolproof either.
Policy's not foolproof either, and what this amounts to is, uh.
So, what we're asking for is, and we're saying the community wants, some teeth put into something that bubbles this to the surface, so it doesn't become a problem.
That's called an election day every two years.
And we're talking our way out of that fox right now, by saying there's no way to do that.
Um, an election day every two years is what.
That's not good enough. There's got to be a different mechanism, and I'm going to sit here and keep screaming about it until we talk, until we talk, until we're blue in the face, right? So, here's the problem, you get an overeagered city manager that puts his thumb on the CFO, who feels like she can't say anything, and all of a sudden, somebody recommends money be spent that shouldn't be spent over certain limits, and it gets spent, even though you got a policy that says one thing. You know, and so that's what gets cities in trouble, that's what gets every organization in trouble. So, you gotta have some kind of checks and balances, multiple approvals, something. So, I'm not going to be happy to let solve, and I'll keep saying, "We're not where we need to be yet."
Well, I mean, you know, legally, you still run into the legal issues, it, it's.
I get it.
And, well, you can't.
Just like the balanced budget, like, we're required to do a balanced budget, right? Same concept, let's figure out how to put that same requirement on other items, just like we do the balanced budget.
I'm open to suggestions, but at the moment, I just know the legislature is not going to approve anything that puts us in an immediate violation of it. I think at this time, if you wanted to go strictly with borrowing, you would put in there, X amount of dollars requires a referendum vote, X to X, X to Y requires four fifths of council, anything below that requires a majority of council. You could put that potentially in your charter. But I would definitely not put, um, in that charter that any, any amount over fifty million dollars of debt is inappropriate for the city to be. I mean, because we're going to be in violation of it for the next seventeen years.
Understand that, and I know you're saying, you know, anything that we do as a council can be undone. That's just part of government, that, that's, we all understand that. But still, yet, we want, I want something in place that assures the city that there is a form of protection, and that if it is going to be changed, it is going to have to be brought to the public's attention, that it's going to be changed, and then they're going to have to justify to the public why they want it changed. Once we change it, they can't just unchange it, the next five people sitting here can't just unchange it without making it public, and without the people knowing about it.
I think, in order to, if you want to do that, then you cannot put anything in there in regards to our current debt limits.
Understand that.
Then, I think what the language would need to be is, X amount of dollars requires a majority of council to vote, X to Y requires four fifths of the major, of council to approve it, and anything over X plus Y requires, uh, a referendum vote.
Okay, well, that's something, I mean, that's.
And even though you're.
Better than what we've got.
And even though you're over the limit now, you could make it a requirement in the policy that if you do exceed these limits, for whatever reason, it requires certain triggers to occur. Like, the Virginia State Public Auditor's Office immediately gets notified by letter that you're above your policy statement on financial controls. You know, so you make it really difficult, and that's approved by city council as a formal policy, so then, the CFO has to, and it has to be audited every year by the, by the CPA firm we select, that we are or we are not within those guidelines. And if we're outside those guidelines, it has to be publicly made available and publicly made available to the state.
Well, and let's remember, though, the guidelines that we're talking about here in this borrowing section are only when we go borrow money. It's not, so, the scenario you just presented would not have an impact on this charter, because we're not going to be borrowing any money for the foreseeable future. And, yeah.
But in the charter, you could say, "Establish a financial policy approved by council that requires blah, blah, blah," right? And add some teeth to that.
And see, we have that in our current charter, under the finance department, over section, uh, set seven point oh two of the charter. It goes in detail as to what, uh, the finance department should do and should not do. Now, it does not go into detail in regards to borrowing or debt limits or anything like that, but these are things that, you know, we have to do per the charter, you know? It talks about the annual audit, other audits of accounts, um, you know, we're supposed to protect the interests of the city. Complete financial statements, reports of financial transactions to the city. So, I mean, there are some of those checks and balances in place now. We've just got to figure out, if it's borrowed, if, one is it the debt limit we're concerned about, cause I can tell you right now, we're well beyond whatever debt limit we should be at for a healthy debt limit for our city area size. And whenever we get back down to a healthy debt limit, we'll all probably be long gone from the positions we're in right now. And if it's a, if it's a borrowing, then we need to figure out what numbers are appropriate for the city to abide by when it comes to borrowing.
That was one question I was going to ask about, when it came to borrowing, you mentioned the, the figures, ten million, and then ten to fifteen, and then over fifteen.
Right.
Are those numbers, uh, should it be ten and twenty, or five and ten?
You know, really, I think, and just in my opinion, I mean, I've dealt with the operations of the city now for a little over a year. I would say, anything less than two and a half million would just be a majority vote of council. Um, I think anywhere from two and a half to maybe five, or maybe seven and a half would require a four fifths vote of council. And then anything over seven and a half would require, uh, a referendum. You know, because most of the equipment that we buy, um, if we have to, most of the time, it's, it's at lease, if you're talking about a fire truck or, uh, large equipment like that, that's probably the most expensive piece of equipment we buy. You know, you're looking anywhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred to one point two million dollars right now, uh, for one of those pieces of equipment. We already have that in our capital budget, it's set out, we have lease payments, uh, for those vehicles, and we own them outright after ten years. So, I think when you're getting to that two and a half range, that's really when council needs to be made aware of it. You'll probably be made aware of it anyway throughout our budget process through the capital improvement plan. So, it's not that you're not going to hear about it, it's not that the public's not going to hear about it, it's just, when are you going to hear about it? And when is it going to take place? And most of those big-ticket items are going to occur during your budget planning process.
Well, I think the financial policy's got to be completely comprehensive, it just can't be borrowing. It's got to be, how's the reserve fund set up, what's its purpose, what level should it be funded at? What restricted funds should be established after capital projects, to have the city planning for its future capital needs? What are, what are the borrowing limits, you know, for short-term and long-term borrowing? And so, it should list all those, and require the CFO to make a statement annually to the auditors, "We're either healthy in each one of those, or we're not," and sign it, and date it, and city manager, and it goes to city council, and it goes to the state. There's got to be some accountability on this.
In that section seven oh two, under the finance department, and all the duties and stuff, does it say anywhere? Cause I was thinking back, maybe part of the solution around this is to put language that says, city council, or the finance department, whoever shall determine financial policies for the city, because, just like where we had the issue about rules, of course, we never, it took us a while to get around to actually doing that, it said, "We shall have rules." If it doesn't say, to my knowledge, there's only one financial policy we have in place now, and that's regarding, uh.
The reserve fund.
The reserve fund.
Right.
So, I mean, I think the first place to start is to say, "We have to have policies," and not say, "May, but shall," and, and I don't know how you want to phrase that, is, is necessary for the financial health of the city, but then that wouldn't give you the leeway to do all the policies that you just said. I think that would be the change, is, cause then, to get to Mr. Wingard's point, you couldn't undo those policies, cause you have to have the policies. I mean, the charter says you, you have to have po, financial policies, so you couldn't just come back and say, "We don't need financial policies anymore," that, you see what I'm saying?
I mean, I, I think that's probably one way to get to where Mr. Mumpower wants to go. As you know, and Mr. Mumpower knows too, Tamara and I have been working on financial policies that have been presented to the, uh, finance committee. I'll say it again, we're building the city from the foundation up, and. I'll say it again, we're building the city from the foundation up, and the city has not had any of these policies in place since eighteen ninety, or if they have, they've been long gone, and, you know, we've gotta start somewhere, and we're in the process of starting these policies, and we've been working on these policies since late August, early September, to start getting some of these things in place, and it's just gonna be a building block after building block to get it done, um, and we can do that. I mean, that's, that's not a problem, that's something that Ms. Bradlin, uh, harps on all the time, is, you know, where are the policies for the city, there needs to be a policy handbook, in particular, so all the departments, when it comes to finances, can go and say, "Oh, I've got this purchase for X number of dollars, what's the process?"
Yeah, 'cause I-
And, because nobody has that now.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, if you just say that we, you know, shall have policies, then, then it forces us to, to come up with the policies, but the other thing, your point about the audit, is I would think, you know, one of the things the auditors would look at, 'cause they come in, they look, they, they don't just look at the, the financial transactions necessarily, they look at, uh, instances of fraud and, and, and other things, but one of the things they'll look at is compliance with those policies. So, that should, if you put those in place, I would think should be a part of the annual audit, that, that, that can be one, or, or you could add that to the scope of work, that we, not only should you look at our financial statements, but you should look at, how, how are we complying with our own policies?
And I think it would just be as easy as adding a sentence somewhere in the Finance Department section that says that the chief financial officer and the city manager shall develop financial policies for the city, uh, in accordance with, you know, the, uh, GASB and good accounting principles, and-
To be approved by-
To be appro, yeah, to be approved by council, and then we move forward from that point, I mean, I think that's the first step we've gotta take. And part of that policy can be borrowing limits, or we can put borrowing limits right now in the charter. But we've, I mean, this is a process, guys, I mean, it's just, we'll have to build it one block at a time.
Yeah, one of our biggest problems, I, and I saw it right off the bat my first year with the, uh, with the budget, we're not setting aside the proper amounts for capital.
No, we're not.
On anything.
On anything.
On anything. So this city has truly been operating with a maxed-out credit card, just with their fingers crossed, hoping nothing goes wrong, because when something did go wrong, they was forced into borrowing, because they never put money back, knowing that the trucks were gonna wear out, the cars were gonna wear out, the buildings were gonna run down, the heat and air was gonna go off, and have big expenditures. We've gotta straighten the budget out on our end, we've gotta start putting line items in that will cover all the capitals.
Building maintenance, I mean, something as simple as building maintenance, something as simple, I mean, you all were the first council that put money aside for a landfill liner, and it's not like councils in the past and administration in the past didn't know that you needed a liner every three to five years.
Exactly.
They just went and borrowed for it, when that time came, instead of putting two to three hundred thousand dollars aside every year for it. And it's things like that, I mean, it's just gonna take one block at a time, we've just gotta chip away at those problems, take the landfill post-closure and closure costs. We've known there's closure and post-closure costs coming with this landfill.
And we have how much set aside?
And not one time in the past forty years has one dollar been set aside to cover any of those post-closure and closure costs. And now, we're getting ready to see what that brings us, on January the eighth, I think, and it's not gonna be pretty. I mean, I spent five hours with them Thursday afternoon, with their engineers from this, uh, that, you know, we've hired through the state, and it's not a pretty sight. Nobody in this room's gonna be happy, I can promise you.
But if we budgeted-
If you budget-
The way we're supposed to budget, we would cut down on the vast majority of all borrowing.
Right.
So borrowing's not really the major issue, it's the lack of planning.
Lack of financial planning.
Lack of financial planning, knowing things are gonna happen-
Right.
And not being prepared for it.
But let's think about what borrowing has got us. The borrowing got us a landfill and a retail development. Without those two things, we'd be any other-
And a golf course.
And a golf course, we'd be any other locality around, but those things right there has what's put this city in the bind that we're in right now. It's that simple.
So what we're talking about is putting some policies in place to basically unwind that, to say, okay, before you, when you balance the budget, you're required to set up restricted fund accounts to make sure reserves are set aside for capital, for school, whatever, to the levels of X percent of the budgetary revenues before any new expenditures or any new, um, you know, dollars can be, uh, budgeted, you know, you gotta, you gotta put some kind of teeth into it.
I don't think there's anyone that's gonna disagree with you on that point. We've gotta know where our council wants us to go, I've heard, "Put things in the charter" for the past year. You know, there's certain limits when it comes to the charter, and sometimes when you put things in charter, it's gonna bind your hands on an unintended consequence, and you're gonna have an unintended consequence from it. So, I have to get a consensus from you all, what's prob, you will not hear myself or Ms. Bradlin wanting to say that we don't need financial policies, because it's absolutely crazy that we don't have. Um, we've just gotta decide how we're gonna best do it, so that it protects the fu, city now and in the future. I understand-
So should the, should the charter then read that, um, financial policies should be put in place, or shall be put in place, to restrict borrowing, cash flow, reserve fund, blah, blah, all the things they're talking about, in order to ensure the city's bond ratings and financial position are kept whole, you know, in the, in the language, so you see the intent, it's very clear?
I, I think we could easily come up with a broad statement that encompasses what each of you all and what I want, what Ms. Bradlin want, for our financial policies. Now, the question ultimately comes, is a broad statement good enough for you all right now? Because, once again, there are certain things that we can and can't do with that charter, and there are certain things legally I wouldn't recommend we did, which is one, say our debt limit shouldn't exceed fifty million dollars, because we're already in violation of it. Um, borrowing, I have no problem putting that in the charter, because you can say, "These are the limits that we're gonna set as proper for borrowing funds," but for the foreseeable future, we're not gonna be able to borrow any more than two million dollars. And, so, I think we all wanna get to the same place, it's just, which road are we gonna take to get there?
Okay, well, I think we've been really productive tonight with the ideas of how we can get there, because we can start with getting the lines and capital improvements back in the budget the way that they're supposed to be, and then we can start with the suggestions that X dollar amount has to be four fifths vote, and then after that, blah, 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 and then referendum above that.
Do you mean with that in the policy or the charter?
Policy.
Okay.
Policy.
Okay.
So there is a couple of different avenues that gets this council where we feel like this city needs to be, 'cause we're taking it from two, two avenues instead of one.
Instead of just going straight to borrowing, we're establishing, we shall set the capital improvements aside, whatever percentages we agree on.
Let's do the, how about I do this, I'll come up with language sometime tomorrow, uh, get that to you all, because, in order to get a lot of this on, we're gonna be okay with the legislative calendar, um, but I'll get you all a broad paragraph that we can include in the Finance Department or its own section or something, where it would be appropriate, that discusses what we all foresee to do with the financial, uh, financial planning of the city, and let you all take a look at that, and then we can, uh, once I get a consensus on that, I can bring that back when we vote on this November twenty-seventh, and you can vote it up or down at that time. But we, we'll have meetings in between now and November twenty-seventh to discuss that, but I'll get you all some language sometime tomorrow, so that you can start looking at it and tweaking anything, and I'll try and incorporate everything that was discussed here tonight.
Okay.
Investigation into city affairs, um, not sure when this was last updated, maybe about nineteen ninety-six, I think, um, doesn't say it, but, yeah, nowadays, evidence is electronic, cell phones, it's more than books and paper, and I'll credit Mr. Osmond for noticing that, maybe we need to change the, compel the production of evidence for that language instead of books and paper.
So you change to produce such evidence in line with the next sentence, so that's gonna be consistent on each sentence, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, I think that may, is that it? Yeah, I think, yeah, that's it. So I do know, I, I do wanna touch on some things that were touched on previously that we have discussed, uh, and I think this goes back to, uh, what we just discussed in regards to borrowing and the finances of the city. I know at one point, language limiting the city's ability to enter into private enterprise, um, you can, if you had a, everyone knows that the purpose of government is for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. So, it could always be argued that a retail development that's gonna bring in revenue is for the welfare of the citizens. So I think you can kind of, um, get very broad real quick. I think if you limit it, and you say that the city shouldn't be in anything that private enterprise can do, private enterprise can do jails, so we shouldn't have a jail, private enterprise does security, so we shouldn't have a police force, you know, so you can all of a sudden say, "If we don't do any, we shouldn't do anything that's in regard, that private enterprise can do," you could be very limited with what you're doing. So, to me, that's probably something we should just leave alone at this point, and let's take one step at a time, get our financial policies in place, and I think, if you have the financial policies in place, you don't have to worry about entering into a landfill or a retail development, or some other endeavor that probably should've never been entered to, into to begin with.
I, I would add one thing, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, too, regarding, you know, entering into private enterprise, I think an area we need to look at policies centers around, uh, incentives and other things the city may give to, to a business, because, uh, I think we need to be, have that written out, and be a little more strategic about the way we go about that. I, I think there's another area, not just with the internal finances of the city, but this, it relates to that, it also relates to this, that I think, you know, if we lay that out, kind of, what are our goal, again, being more proactive, what do we want to achieve through economic development in certain ways, then it becomes more clear when you deviate from that and get it, and kind of get off a field. But I think the incentives is one that, to me, just seems so, um, tends to be more arbitrary than I would like.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to charter changes, comments, suggestions?
Well, I think we gotta think about this private enterprise some more, because we, I don't wanna push it aside, I mean, the things that's gotten this city in trouble have been their decisions on private enterprise projects, like the golf course, like the landfill, like getting into telecommunications on the BBU authority. I mean, every single one of those have been a huge financial, you know, problem. So we've gotta put something in place that says, if the city decides to get into private enterprise and compete in the open market, there's gotta be some checks and balances there, that there's gotta be a business case put together that's certified by, you know, outside business consultants, or something that says, "This is a legitimate enterprise where you can, you know, you can do this and be, uh, safe financially," because they're just doing it blindly, not knowing anything about that enterprise. And this, it's cost this city tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars, so it's a big deal, when you say, "Private enterprise."
I agree with that.
That's what got us where we are.
And I think, uh, there was an article from nineteen ninety-three that I found, uh, where, uh, a city official, this was when the landfill was being, uh, contemplated, the city official stated to the newspaper, "We know we can't afford this, but we're doing it anyway." So, once again, if you have financial policies-
That was this city, wasn't it?
That was this city.
Yeah.
That way, once again, if you have the financial policies in place, you don't ever get to the point to have to borrow thirty million dollars for a landfill, or fifty million dollars for retail development, because you've got things that, you got checks and balances in place to prevent that from happening.
Well, there are firms out there that would, that would certify your business plan, and they put their financial, you know, stamp on it, that this is, this is legitimate. If you can do that and get it approved by the rating agencies, if this seems legitimate, maybe you've got something safe, but if you can't put some extra hurdles that you have to get over, when you're starting to think about getting into private enterprise, you're asking for trouble. And that's what, that's what's happened here, they've not done any other due diligence, I mean, like, zero due diligence.
Yeah, there has to be something, 'cause I promise you, when the landfill came about, I promise you that nobody on council knew anything about operating in the landfill, and same with the golf course, I bet you none of them knew anything about operating a golf course, and none of them knew anything about a retail development. So this city has just been notorious, getting, stepping into something that it knows absolutely nothing about.
So, um, let's work on the financial policy language, get that for the charter, and I think through the policy and procedures, we can limit that private enterprise, um, to some degree.
All right, I think, uh, we don't have, it's a discussion item, but Michael had, he had written down to talk about something on the charter discussion, you'll have him see what he wants to say.
Thank you, gentlemen of the council, uh, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at one oh one Ashley Drive. Uh, one thing, to start off with, most of the, uh, debt control concerns, uh, I believe were addressed in the proposal that I submitted two weeks ago before the council. They included such things as a requirement of, uh, uh, ten million dollars of, of the total carrying limit of the city for a particular purpose or project, whether in single or multiple separate actions, or total indebtedness within the single fiscal year, uh, fifteen million dollars or fifteen percent of the total carrying limit of the city, uh, or a to, or a total indebtedness value of two million dollars for a particular purpose or project. If such indebtedness selling, shall increase the total carrying level in excess of fifty percent of the carrying limit of the city, would, uh, require a referendum, and that was in the proposal, um, and it sounds like the, uh, leaning of the council tonight would be to make that as part of the policy rather than charter, but it sounds like that would address many of the, uh, debt limit, uh, the borrowing, uh, concerns that the, uh, council has brought up this evening. Um, in addition, there were some other concerns mentioned, uh, previously, such as residency requirements and time period for filing as a candidate. My submissions that I made previously included, uh, the adding as a requirement for all elective office, similar requirements as to for city council, specifically that such a person, uh, be any qualified, any person qualified to vote in the city, owning real property, and who has not been found guilty of a criminal charge, uh, for which he must have been removed from office, shall be eligible to the member of the council. Uh, I would add to that, that, um, such a prospective, uh, official must also be fully paid in, uh, taxes to the city, and that such, uh, qualifications be met sixty days prior to the beginning of the qualifying period for the election, which is normally , uh, January first. That, I believe that would address many of the concerns concerning residency requirements. Uh, also, there were discussions previously concerning, um, aligning the appointment periods, right now, there are some appointments that are three years, some are four, and some are five, and I, uh, recommended in, uh, my submission a few weeks ago, that, uh, those terms, uh, be four, uh, reworded as four years such terms- terms, uh, be four, uh, reworded as four years, such terms to be staggered, um, because currently, the code also does not require that the terms be staggered.
Okay, I think we addressed that at the last meeting, that we changed the planning permission to four-year terms. I didn't address that. Michael, you'd already addressed it previously.
There are some other appointments as well that are also not four years, um, and I didn't note the appointment, the specific appointment. I did note that it was in Section 8.09A, where that particular appointment is five years currently. Uh, also, uh, the suggestion on the, in the, uh, agenda was concerning accountability for constitutional officers, and I made recommendations that, um, several of the other appointment, uh, the several officers, which currently have very few, uh, basically work requirements, I can't find it right now, I've got multiple pages of recommendations here, uh, that each of those be assigned, uh, similar requirements as is currently listed for, I believe it's the, um, concerning financial, anyway, one, one, one of the financial, um, elected offices currently has some detailed requirements, and the other elected offices do not currently have such requirements. And, uh, I think that, I try not to take too much time, so I'm rushing through this, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I did submit most of these...
Should we get an electronic copy of that sent out?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, uh, is, uh, considered closed session pursuant to 2.23711 dot A1 Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. Discussion consideration of interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel. And pursuant to 2.23711A6 Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly, public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit may be adversely affected.
Move that we enter into executive session for those reasons stated.
Motion, Mr. Osborne.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, by roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, I think that's the last item. With that, we'll adjourn.